20th Town Council meeting. I'm going to apologize in advance because my, both of my ears are completely blocked and I don't know if I'm yelling or if I'm being too quiet. So, there's that. So if you'll please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Meta Mayor would like to make a motion to add the U-Rock Awards following the Pledge of Allegiance.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. So, we had a whole bunch of nominations for the U-Rock Award this quarter and I'm super excited. I'm gonna come over there and, and we will hand those out and recognize some outstanding folks in our community. So, as you know, every quarter or so, sometimes we're not always right on schedule. We have these U-Rock Awards which we started during COVID. And we started them because we really wanted to make the community feel a sense of pride and togetherness during a time when we were really just sort of isolated and apart. But still so many people in the community were doing really wonderful things that needed to be acknowledged to keep our community going. And that's kind of how it started. And so every few months, we still recognize folks in the community. And I'm not sure if everyone was able to make it, but our first recipients were the folks from Hicks Repair Garage. And I don't know that they're here. Do we have other people coming in? But I do want to recognize that we had a nomination for Alan Gary, who are from Hicks Repair Garage. And I'm told, we are told that the service is incredible. They're always fair and impartial and balanced and always super helpful. So, we're, we just want to give a big shout out to them and say, "You guys rock." And we have a little recognition for them. We also had a recommendation and, come on in, nomination for John Holliday. And we are going to give that one to Nancy Breschah, who will pass that on to Mr. Holliday, who is an employee of the town and just goes above and beyond in everything that he does. And he is absolutely beloved by the community. This one I know is absolutely here, Ms. Judy Sartucci. And I'm gonna call her up. Judy is a nurse and she is with the Central Connecticut Health District. And Judy was really instrumental in helping our community during COVID. And helping our community with numerous vaccine clinics and all, all kinds of stuff to really get us on the right track. It was a monumental task. And ever since then, Judy has just really been a huge support for everything that we do in keeping us healthy and happy. And she has served the Connecticut Central Health District for so many years, 18 years.
On the board.
On the board. And we just, we just want to say, "You rock." So, thank you. Thank you.
Just to say that I was not only pleased to be on the board, but when, in my previous life, when I was at the Department of Public Health with Barbara Gilbert and a number of people here in town helped to put the Health District together back in the 1990s. And it's great to see something like that come together and serve people and be so receptive to people and their needs. And of course, again, want to thank the Mayor and the Town Council, as I have before, for all your continued support for the Health District and for public health.
Thank you, Judy. Congratulations. Congratulations. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have a recommendation and a nomination that we are recognizing, Mr. Nick Sella. So I'm gonna call Nick up. So Nick was nominated because he is a really big community spirit and a big presence in our community. He is an incredibly talented artist and his music has touched and inspired so many people through social media. And you're having such an impact and we're so incredibly proud of you. And, you know, I've seen Nick performing at a lot of different events in town. But when I saw the impact that he was having on social media, I was just absolutely blown away. So thank you for giving others a voice and encouraging people to use their special talents. And we're, we're just so grateful to have you. Yep, so this is on behalf of the town and the Town Council. All right, this man doesn't need an introduction, but I will call him up anyway, Mr. Henry Vassal. So, everyone should know Henry Vassal. He was our former mayor. But equally important, Henry has served our community for so many decades. He's not only a local business owner, but he has an incredibly generous heart. And he's always, always giving back to the community in a myriad of ways. No matter what someone's need is, Henry is always there to fill that void and usually silently. And he's like one of those unsung heroes that, you know, you just never hear about. But if someone is in need or there's fires or there's emergencies or there's crises, usually that support is coming from this gentleman in his individual capacity, which is so impressive. He's also runs the Education Foundation for many years. He has done our Santa North Pole Express and just, just a whole bunch of things that bring family and community together. And so that's why Henry was nominated. And so on behalf of the Town of Rocky Hill and the Town Council, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, our next award recipient is Brian Wozina. Brian Wozina is from Local Stage Pro. And he is a resident in town, a local business owner. And Brian is another one of those unsung community heroes. He was nominated by a few people, actually, because Brian is always there with all of his stage equipment. And so Brian does a lot of sound and staging and concerts and things like that. And he's just one of those go-to people where we can say, or anyone can say, "Do you have some lighting? Do you have a stage? Can we borrow you?" So he is really the gentleman behind our Memorial Day celebrations, Veterans Day celebrations, a lot of things that you see going on in town where we have music or lighting. He is the one completely volunteering behind the scenes to do that, running our parades and everything else. So on behalf of the town and the Town Council, "You rock." And so here you are. Congratulations. Thank you. All right, and we have two more. I'm gonna call up Ani Nagabandi. And thank you for coming. Today is Diwali, so happy Diwali to everyone. And thank you for coming on the holiday. Ani was actually nominated because of the extensive amount of community service he does. And that, you know, it goes beyond within his own community. But the outreach to the entire community of Rocky Hill and others is just really, you're having a profound impact for such a young person. As a senior in high school, he just knows the benefits of civic engagement. You are really a role model for others your age. And so we're so incredibly proud of you. And we just want you to know that "You rock." Okay, and then this one is a bit of a surprise. He's not anticipating it. But on behalf of the town and, and on behalf of the entire Town Council, we wanted to recognize Bill O'Sullivan. And you can get up or you don't have to. I can come over there. But Bill, you know, is taking a hiatus from political activity. We hope that it's temporary. He has given many, many years of service. And he has been in the trenches. He has seen a lot. And he has been an incredible bipartisan champion for getting work done. And he has always been someone that I've always felt comfortable sharing information with and knowing that there would be collaboration, one way or the other. So we just want to say, "You rock." And happy retirement. Thank you. And that concludes our.
Maybe it's mine. Did we switch them?
Yeah, a little bit of a false alarm. My mother at all, whatever. And I called the hospital. But it's still what I see because he couldn't do a stress test today.
Okay, moving on to appointments and resignations. Oh, no, we're gonna move on to public comment. Would anyone that's here would like to come up for a public comment? I don't think so. Oh, Carrie, that's right. Joanne, do you want to do your public comment first and then we'll do Carrie?
Okay. Regarding upcoming activities in the Rocky Hill Community Center during early voting, I am submitting this written comment regarding the upcoming Diwali celebration at the Rocky Hill Community Center. This is a wonderful event that reflects our town's diversity and community spirit, and I am wholly in support of it. I would normally love to attend to celebrate with neighbors and candidly to enjoy the food. But after spending time reviewing Connecticut General Statute's Section 9-236 and recent State Elections Enforcement Commission rulings, I believe all candidates should abstain from attending this year since it takes place during the period of early voting. Under Connecticut General Statute's Section 9-236, no person may loiter, peddle, or solicit within 75 feet of any outside entrance to a polling place or any area being used for voting. The law is clear. Candidates must avoid activity that could create even the appearance of electioneering near a polling location while voting is taking place. In SEC Case File Number 2020, or 2024-104, document attached, the Commission did not deny that a candidate's participation in a community or public event during an election period can still create the appearance of political benefit or improper use of public space, even if no direct campaigning occurs. In this instance, the Diwali event is being held in a room that uses the same entrance and exit door as a polling place and is assessed or accessed through the same area that voters travel to reach the voting area. Because of that overlap, attending the event would mean passing through or even loitering in an active voting zone, precisely what the spirit of Section 9-236 seeks to prevent. Beyond the legal concern, the presence of candidates for office alone would not add value to the event. This is a cultural celebration and with limited capacity, each of us would take the place of a resident who otherwise, otherwise might have been able to attend. Out of respect for both the organizers and the integrity of the election process, I plan not to attend and I respectfully encourage all other candidates to do the same. We can still extend our warm wishes to those celebrating Diwali while ensuring that this community event remains free from even the appearance of impropriety. In case there is any question, I would also extend this to the Market on the Hill event that takes place November 2nd in the Community Center. Thank you, Alan Smith, 112 Old Main Street, candidate for Mayor, Rocky Hill.
I'm gonna entertain a motion to suspend the rules. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, we have gone through this ad nauseam. We had a discussion regarding the statute. We read the statute here. I indicated that I will be attending Diwali. That's not changed. Any other candidate who wants to attend Diwali, I don't see why that would be an issue. And I really don't understand why we continue to bring up the fact that there was a possible violation, which the Democrat Town Committee filed against Ed Sharmit. We all know that. And it went nowhere. So, there doesn't seem to be an issue. We asked if there would be other means of ingress and egress. I believe that there are. So, that's my perspective. Anyone else? Okay, let's move forward. Representative Wood?
Good evening, everyone. Carrie Wood, 260 Fran Street. I'm here in my capacity as state representative. I've been getting a lot of phone calls and emails asking what is going on around town with some projects. So I just wanted to give you an overview of that. I also am going to send this to the Ray Reminder and put this in an email and post it on social media. So New Britton Avenue and Trinity Ridge Crosswalks. This project is a pedestrian crossing, which will make it ADA compliant with highly visible markings and signage. It is already started and it was, it is expected to be completed in late 2025. The Connecticut DOT District One Headquarters and Material Testing Lab on West Street. This is a massive project, multi-millions of dollars. This is a new Connecticut DOT campus with labs, a sign shop, support facilities, and includes utility and pedestrian upgrades. This is underway and will be completed in late 2026. While this is not a state-funded project, Eversource is doing transmission line upgrades through Rocky Hill. Lot of other stuff that's not very important here. But the access is Fran Street, Cromwell Avenue, and West Street. This will be completed by the end of this year. Glasson Berry Avenue and Ferry upgrades. This is a project that is sidewalks plus, it's, it's actually one project, but the funding will go to sidewalks and the ferry terminal upgrades, which will put new ADA upgrades into that ferry terminal and repaving the parking lot down by the ferry. The goal is to improve pedestrian access to the river. And this has been completed or started and will be completed in early 2026. I-91 paving, getting lots of interest on this because if you're driving home late at night and you try to get off Exit 23, it may be closed. But they are doing patching, joint sealing, and bonding. This will be wrapped up by the end of November. So just something we have to kind of be concerned for, for everyone that's traveling later in the evening. Senior housing rehabilitation, Willow Road Senior and Disabled Housing broke ground. It was budgeted at 5.5 million. It has gone over budget, but will be, continue to be funded by the state and HUD. And they are trying to not really disturb the people that live there by working on one unit at a time, completing it and moving people back in. So that will be completed, that has started and will be completed mid-2026. Veterans housing at the DVA Campus. We all were aware of the $5 million that the Legislature has allocated. More money came from the Department of Housing. So in addition to the row houses, to the studios, to the houses along West Street and the houses along Levittow Lane, all of those have been getting upgrades. New veteran families have been moved in. These are temporary housing to allow people to get back on their feet and move people into permanent housing. This will still be ongoing and be completed mid-2026. And then lastly, there was working with the Town of Rocky Hill. Thank you, everyone. We secured $495,000 for the foundry redevelopment with the goal to help that project put a shovel in the ground and get to the finish line. That being said, I also want to just let everyone know that we, there is rumors of a special session that is ongoing. The discussion is a housing bill, 400 to 500 million allocated out of a reserve fund to cover any federal gaps. There's also a mental health component as well as a piece on firefighters that came out of the Public Safety Committee. Nothing is set in stone, but as soon as I know exactly what will be in special session, and even before that, I will be holding coffee hours. I'll be at the senior center. I will send out emails of when those are because I want to hear from everyone, especially everyone here on the Town Council, of where we stand on those types of things. A special session is usually reserved for an emergency. So I'd love to get everyone's feedback on that. Thank you so much for your time. Have a wonderful evening.
Okay, moving on to appointments and resignations.
None on this side.
I do.
Oh, okay.
We need a municipal agent for the elderly. Melissa Hicks was the municipal agent. She was recommending Krista Filbrick. She is our senior and elderly generalist down in Melissa's office. So we need the Town Council just to approve her appointment.
What was it called, municipal agent?
Municipal Agent for the Elderly.
For the elderly. And how long is that term?
I believe it's three to five years.
And under whose umbrella? Some state agency?
Probably DDS, maybe.
Guess what that means, a municipal agent? What does that mean?
They, they, the municipal, I can't speak tonight. The municipal agent, they work with the seniors, 60-plus Medicare choice programs, medical, everything that you may need to help fund yourself or rental assistance, all sorts of medical programs. They do that now. That's what Krista, Crystal does now. But we just need an official destiny for the, for the state.
It seems we have a lot of these agents in different places municipal represent, like a liaison for a lot of our departments and things.
It has to be appointed by the chief elected official.
All right. Anyone want to make a motion to appoint?
I'll make a motion to appoint. I'm sorry, what was her name?
Crystal Filbrick.
Crystal Filbrick.
I thought Krista was the one doing it already.
No, Melissa was.
Oh, Melissa needs Krista.
Melissa recommended Krista.
Gotcha, gotcha.
As a municipal agent representing the elderly, is that proper title?
Yes.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
And there's no appointments or resignations from our side.
Okay. Approval of the Minutes Town Council meeting October 6, 2025?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay. Subcommittee reports, Finance?
Finance Committee met on October 9th. On the consent agenda this evening, we have a lease purchase for a Tarko Leaf Windy 400 unit, which was part of our CIP within the budget. It's approximately $35,000 per year. Under new business, I'm sorry, under old business, we have the registrar's salaries, which was sent down from the Finance Committee. We'll discuss that in more detail at that point. Under the asset forfeiture, the Police Department received $300,000 for forfeitures, which is far in excess of what they usually get. Through our finance director, we've invited Chief Collette to come to the next CIP meeting to discuss potential uses for, for those funds. An opportunity to understand how they'd like to spend it. In the past, it's usually been for replacement patrol cars. We received our pilot funding. However, it was 5,500 hours below what we budgeted. That's a one, one-time budget line item within our, from the state. Our, and our municipal revenue sharing of $275,000 is currently delayed. If you remember last year, that was the one that was pulled from our budget. And then last minute, they gave it back. So hopefully those funds will appear again this year. As far as tax collections, we're on target with the three-year average and expenditures are in line. Once the new councils formed, we'll figure out when the meeting schedule will be put together, once we have members. So, and that concludes the finance report.
Okay, thank you. Government Ops?
Government Operations was scheduled to meet earlier today, but that meeting was canceled. I believe the next meeting is likely November 17th.
Okay. Public Safety?
Public Safety, we met this evening before the council. Couple of highlights, we had Fall Fest, which the fire department was at. At the same time, they also had a structure fire on Bailey Road. So with all the resources there, we'll continue to cover the Fall Fest as well as getting members out to the fire to fight the fire. It was, and everything was successful. Nobody was hurt at that. Police Department, I'd like to recognize, they had a CPR incident, an unconscious person. And dispatcher Reynolds at the Police Department was able to work with the family to coach them. And then Sergeant Foss Rugan, Officer Sheen, and Officer Garofalo responded to the scene quickly, preformed CPR, brought the person back to life. And the person is gonna continue a healthy life. So that was quite the successful medical call. The Health District gave us an update. They say respiratory viruses and colds have been down, but they do encourage flu shots. There is a flu clinic here tomorrow at our Town Hall from 2:00 to 6:00 PM in the Community Center. And that's the report.
Senior Liaison?
We're scheduled to have our quarterly meeting October 27th at 5:00 PM.
Land Acquisition and Farmland Preservation?
No report on next meeting, is next week, October 28th.
Liaison to the state rep and the state senator?
Obviously just received a nice update from Representative Wood. And I did not receive any update from Senator Lesser.
School Liaison is not present. Capital Improvements Committee?
I noted the last meeting, we need to find a new date. I don't know if we've found one, but it was scheduled the day before Thanksgiving.
Oh, right.
We'll be looking for a new date for that meeting.
Okay. And Economic Development Subcommittee?
No meeting scheduled at this time.
Okay. Moving on to the Consent Agenda, Approval Resolution, Lease Purchase, Leaf Unit?
I'll make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Moving on to Old Business, Discussion Possible Action, Registrar Salary?
I just, I have to recuse.
Okay. Are you gonna stay here?
I'm gonna stay here.
Okay. You're gonna pretend you're not playing.
Meta Mayor, just for procedure, I think we tabled this the last time. So make a motion to take it off the table.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Who would like to start?
Go ahead.
So yes, we had a resolution that came here before, went back to Finance. We had recommendation of $36,000 for registrars, 2125 an hour for deputy. And then a January 37 and a $22 hour, $22 an hour for deputies. And our Finance Meeting, we did a review. We have a revised resolution before you now. The $30,000 for registrar and for July 1 and $31,000 for January of 2026. That falls within the budgeted dollar amount for this fiscal year. We also present a one-time annual stipend for early voting. This year, we're receiving over $11,000 in early voting grant expenditure, grant revenues. And to be using a portion of those funds to offset the early voting stipend for these individuals. These are dollars that were not anticipated for the, the grants. So this will be in addition to what's presently budgeted.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
I do have one question. So Mona, that $11,000 change that came from the state for expenses associated with early voting, are there other out-of-pocket expenses that that $11,000 could or should be used for? So we're accounting for eight of the 11 or so here, so at least like 3,000 or so. But are there other expenses that we should be mindful of that the $11,000 was intended for?
It was not budgeted for or intended, so this is funds that we were not expecting. So we have budgeted. So we have budgeted this year in expectation that no funds would come. So this is above and beyond. I mean, it's obviously if we end up with additional election workers, this would absorb any costs if they run into any extra food costs. So it has that flexibility to cover any overages, but to be had budgeted for early voting in this year's budget and anticipating no additional funds.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a concern about that. I mean, it's a great opportunity, our state's giving us some money for it. But the money that we had budgeted, we could put back into the general fund or we could use it in other means. I just don't think because we're receiving money, we should be just handing it out. I think I am concerned about a stipend. The statute, the funding is for early voting. Early voting is 14 days. I don't know if, my personal opinion, giving somebody $4,000 each for 14 days of work is appropriate. It's a concern of mine if, if the money is, is being used properly from the grant.
Yeah. Finance committee.
Yeah, I'm going to leave it to the finance committee, yeah.
So, understanding your concerns, valid concerns. The discussion we've had in the past is that we kind of understood that the registrars are probably, look, probably should be making a little bit more than they are, but we said as a result, we were not getting, it was basically an unfunded mandate, and we said we didn't have the money to pay them that extra money because we weren't getting money from the state. Well, we got money from the state, so we should kind of stick to our premise that we get, since we did get money, that we should share some of it with them while still retaining some for, if there's a potential for extra costs. So I think this is kind of the best of both worlds where they are working the extra, not only the extra 12 or 14 days of extra voting, but there's a lot of planning extra that goes into, there's that wouldn't have gone into it normally if they didn't have the early voting, a lot more training they have to give. So I think it's, I think it's worthy of them to get this. I think it's a small token. The, the only suggestion I would make in the wording of this is, it says one-time annual stipend. I think I would, if others are okay, I would remove the word annual because, you know, it says one-time annual, it almost sounds like it's going to be every year. So I think I would just say one-time stipend, just to make sure it's absolutely clear what the intent is. But that's kind of the rationale, rationale for it. I don't know if anyone's asked thoughts?
Yeah, I would just add from our, from our conversation with it, when you, you start looking at it, it's 14 days, they typically work a 12-hour day, 2125 an hour, $3,500. So, I mean, it's in line with paying for the hours they're working. Both registrars, when they took these positions, early voting wasn't part of the discussions. We set the salaries, it was one day of voting. And I think the national election last year was the first time we had the early voting period, and this is the, kind of the catch-up from that period.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. I completely agree with Councilor Waylon. What would have helped, I think, with this discussion is Mona, getting some data from the area towns. I mean, if, if they are slightly below, how far are they below? And why didn't we discuss it during the budget session that in order to bring them in line per hour, it should be X amount? But my hesitation about the stipend is, we always come across, especially with state mandates, we always come across things that aren't funded. And I would certainly like to see the $11,000 put aside just in case something comes across that we didn't anticipate because we don't know everything. And the state could certainly come down with some other mandate that we're just not prepared for. I'd like to see this put aside.
Just let me make a comment. The, the funding needs to be fully expended by December 31st, 2025. And uses include, or, or include labor costs, printing costs, location-related expenses or equipment and supplies related to early voting.
And that was going to be my question too, if there was an expiration on this. So I think you answered a lot of it by saying that there are expenses that have to be incorporated. And I think that should be part of the discussion. I'd, I'd hate to expend most of this and then all of a sudden we're dipping into the, the amount that had been budgeted because we expended $8,000.
I think any salary increases, if we use this for that, that should be go through a budget process. I don't believe we should be just throwing money at people because we haven't. This money is for early voting, we should use it for, or at minimum, make sure we get through all our early voting and see what's left over. Maybe we revisit this at another time. But by giving out $8,000 of $11,000 grant, I think is extreme to be handing out without fully going through the early voting procedures.
Well, then we're asking the employees to take the risk of whether, how much money we spend. I don't think that's fair to do to two-town employees. It's up to the risk whether, how much gets spent on the election. I mean, they're working regardless of what the outcome is, so. As far as the budget goes, it was a tight budget. We wanted to be careful with our dollars and cents. This is a budget-neutral item as a result of this, and we're only doing it because we have this money and we are using it for the proper, proper method, in my opinion, proper purpose, I should say.
Anyone else? Yeah, I mean, I think we know what the expenses are for the registrar. We go over that through the budget process. I think we have touched on the fact that other towns are a little bit more generous with their registrars than we have been. You know, the 14-day early voting certainly has them working quite a few more hours. And just because voting maybe, and I'm just going to throw this out there, you know, 10 to 3, and that's just an example. You know, I'm sure that they're working, I actually saw this morning, they're working, you know, before that time and they're working after that time. So there's a lot that goes into it, and I, I do think that they should be fairly compensated for that time. I like the idea that it, I think it's creative to use this as a stipend as opposed to building it into the salary. That makes sense because that gives us an opportunity next year to see if in fact we maintain this 14-day schedule that the state has required. You know, we see, did this work? And if we go back to a shorter schedule for early voting, then maybe that, that sum of money isn't necessary in the new budget. But as the finance subcommittee has vetted it, has found it to be budget-neutral, the finance director has said that the, the, there is an expiration date. It seems like it would be fiscally imprudent for us not to use this funding, and the state has approved this particular use. So I'm in favor of it.
Madam Mayor, before we move to vote on it, I pulled up some notes provided by the registrar voters with some of the rates of surrounding towns. Middletown is $32,000 plus $2,000 per election or primary, plus benefits for deputies. And they also had an increase of $6,000 to $38,000 last year. New Britton must be a full-time position, $71,000 plus benefits. Glastonbury, $3369 per hour. Hamden was $20,000, $20,000 an hour, was increased to $35,000. New Haven is $85,000, much bigger, and they have six additional workers plus benefits. Southington, $29 an hour. South Windsor, $43,000. Weathersfield, $38,000 plus an electrical vehicle stipend. And Vernon was $30,000 in their budget.
Thank you.
I thank you for that information, but I think that should have been brought up at the budget procedures, and we could have maybe increased their salaries at that time.
I think it's two separate conversations though, right? Like if we have, we don't have it in the budget. So either we're, we're saying we don't want to fund it, that's A, or we do and we're going to do it through this.
Can I finish what I was saying, please?
Yeah, I know, but that's what, I think that's what we're talking about.
That information would have been useful at the budget hearings, and we could have set their salaries at a higher rate. We're not at that stage. And I believe that we have to live within our budget. We have monies for early voting, let's use that money for early voting. If we have monies left over, that's great, we have extra monies. Let's be conservative and prudent with our money. Just because we receive money from the state doesn't mean we have to spend it frivolously. Let's use it for early voting, see what we have left over, and then we take it from there.
Okay, ready to vote? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay, moving forward. Old business, discussion, possible action, shared services, operational assessments.
Hey Raymond, I have a very quick PowerPoint presentation.
Oh, man.
Very quick. I'm going to do it from the podium. So, this is just a, try to, try to start focusing the town council on this operational efficiency task that we've been talking about. You know, we've had a few, let's see if this works. We have, we've had a few consultants come in. We had a CROG come in to tell us what an official efficiency study is, what it looks like. And then there was discussion before that and also after about, okay, what do we do? How do we go about doing this? You know, what's involved? Do we do a scope? How do we, how do we come about doing this? So, beautiful. So, I'm just going to be a very macro kind of remedial review, try to, try to get our mind set to maybe start so we can actually finish this task. So, so we have goals. You know, what the, we need to know what the goal is. That was discussed, you know, why do we want to do this, right? You know, the goal, and we have our objectives and our strategy. And I'll get to the strategy, which is very simple. You know, the goal, you know. The objectives of how do we get to the goals, those different action steps in the strategy is, how do we actually implement the objectives? Right? So, what's the goal? What do we want to do? What's our motivation? Do we want to improve the efficiency? In effect, this is town operations, we want to cut costs, we want to do both? Is, do we look at town-wide operations? Do we do specific operations, different, do we look at specific priority departments? Do we look at shared operations? Do we look at the Board of Education in the town? You know, financial tasks, HR tasks, other tasks you might want to think of? And do we look at intermunicipal operations such as, you know, Fair Red Commission? Or, you know, an ACO, solid waste and recycling? There, there are many others you want to talk about? Objectives, what are they? I think we want to identify our potential cost savings, any potential waste, right? We want to increase productivity of the employee maybe, or the department, or maybe both. And we, obviously we want to measure, we want to improve productivity, we want to measure workflow. Do we want to identify the gaps in communication between departments, gaps in processes? Do we want to identify processes and operations that we actually excel in, which we do actually excel in many operations? And there are others, we have others, we want to talk about others, we can do that. So the strategy is very simple, we want to hire a consultant, right? To conduct an operational efficiency study based on the approved goal and objectives that we are going to set out for the consultant to develop a scope of services. You know, we've been mentioning the scope of services, what do we want to include? Well, I think we want to include interviews, we want the consultant to interview employees, town council members, the public, do surveys. I'm going to lean, we want the consultant to assess the roles and responsibilities of each employee, each department, look at the operational structure to see if we're operating efficiently as we can. We want to identify opportunities and weaknesses to improve our operations, of course. We want the consultant to propose an organizational staffing adjustments as needed, whether we need more, need less, restructure those different positions. We want them to provide recommendations and implementation measures, a plan for improvements. We don't want them just to go away. You know, we want them to lay out a blueprint of how we proceed and actually succeed. And now, we expect certain deliverables from this particular task, right? We want a comprehensive final report. We want presentation of findings, but I think we want more than one presentation. I think we want several presentations throughout the whole process. And a timeline, we don't want this stretched out for a year. You know, we want a concise timeline, and we want that consultant to stick to it so we actually have time to, to actually improve ourselves and we start if we need to. And the bottom line is the budget. All this, all this depends on how much you want to spend. You know, we have a contingency of how much, Mona? You can speak.
Oh, how much are we going to have available? We won't do the whole 500, I'm sorry.
So we do have funds, but depending on how much this council wants to spend. So, I forgot to hand out, I have handouts, I forgot to hand them out to you. That's why I hesitated when I first got up here. But that's my presentation, and hopefully we can start talking about this at future meetings. Now, you know, set, set aside like, you know, half hour discussed, and we can come back, and hopefully we can develop a scope of services quickly enough to start the whole process. And that concludes my short presentation.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. For the registrar voters, I know Deputy Mayor Greenspan, you made a motion to take it off the table. And then it was seconded, I think, by Councilor Levine. Was there actually a motion to approve the resolution? I don't remember a motion being made to approve it.
I think I just. I took a vote.
You took a vote, but I know we voted on taking it off the table.
Ask for another motion, okay.
I, I'm just saying to approve the resolution, I believe.
Okay. Good call.
Oh, wait, you read the resolution, you're saying?
Yeah, I don't believe anyone made a motion to actually approve it.
Okay.
You want to take that annual thing out?
Good call, Julia.
Should we go back and do that now?
We'll go back and do it, yeah. Thank you.
Jeff, you want to make the motion with your, taking your annual out?
Yep. Are we ready to do that, or are we still working on this, or?
Are there any questions regarding the presentation?
I just think it was an excellent job. Thank you for incorporating all our thoughts, I think. We got them in there, thank you.
So we're going to go back to item, what is it? Old business A, okay. Okay. So going back to old business A, I'm going to make a motion, as it is in our packets, regarding the registrar voter's salary for 2025 and 2026. Be resolved that the Rock Hill Town Council approves the salary for the registrar voters and the deputy registrar voters as follows. As of July 1st, 2025, for the registrar voters, $30,000 and one-time stipend for early voting of $4,000. The deputy registrar voters hourly rate would be $21.25. Starting January 1st, 2026, registrar voters, I'm sorry, as a deputy registrar voters, it was 2125. For, as of 1st of January 2026, the registrar voters' rate would be $31,000 a year, and deputy registrar voters would be $22 per hour.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? Okay.
Counselor Savini vote no?
He, he voted no.
Yeah.
It's 3-3.
No, it's 4-3.
Oh, 4-3.
Of course, you need five votes.
Oh, sorry. 4-3.
You need five votes to pass a resolution.
Five, to pass a resolution? It's not a quorum?
I think so, I'm not sure.
I know, I'm going to ask Mr., Mr. Greenspan, who's the other?
I thought it was a majority vote, but I could be.
I thought it was a majority, as long as you have a quorum.
I'm going to look it up, I mean, I, the vote is what the vote is, so I, but I just.
So they'll figure it out later.
Let me look it up and see what our rules say.
Anybody?
All right, well, while Mimi's doing that, we could continue. Discussion, possible action, performance evaluation of the town manager.
I believe we need to move that after executive session.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to move that after the.
So, I'll make a motion to move that after the executive session.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. Moving on to New Business A. Discussion Possible Action: Cooperative Management Agreement Quarry Park. This is exciting.
I've invited Craig here to answer any questions regarding the cooperative agreement for Quarry Park. As you know, the state owns the park and when the property was transferred in 90, 91, the property owner gave the town a conservation easement for recreational and environmental uses. The property was purchased through a cooperative agreement through the National Heritage Trust Cooperative Program way back. And the agreement is now in the process of being revised by DEEP and just to memorialize what we've been doing since 1990. So, I invited Craig here to maybe give some insight as to how this might change or not change operations.
Hi, everyone. Ray kind of summed it up best. I think this is more or less a way to memorialize the existing relationship and the way we operate the park currently. And it puts pen to paper. It also, I don't think he did mention, there is a, as part of a settlement between the state and the, I think it was the Rocky Hill Estates Development off Old Main. There was $75,000 that was put into a, an account with DEEP that is the town's to access as long as the stewardship agreement is finalized. So, if we want to do any type of work to the, you know, to the trails, we would actually have access to those funds to pay for it and not come off the town's docket. So, you know, there, for example, there might be some water issues if we want to build some foot bridges or something like that moving forward. We wouldn't have to pay for that. Under the old setup, we wouldn't have had access to those funds. We would have actually ended up paying for that or doing the work from in-kind services ourselves. So. I think the long and short of it is, I think this is, you know, an important step for us as a town. This also strengthens our relationship with DEEP when it comes to applying for recreational trail grants. For example, if we want to, we've talked about connectivity, right? Like, that's the big buzzword right now. Well, we put together a scope of work to connect the Goff Brook Lane into the quarry, into the Blue Trail along the railroad there. And we would be able to use funds from this, from the 75K, to perform that work. And in addition, we would be able to, again, apply for grants with DEEP to get this work done. Part of those recreational trail grants, the one that, there actually, there's one that's due in December that we're looking into pretty heavily. It's a 20% match on the town's part and part of the matching funds can actually be through in-kind services. You can also apply for capital equipment as well through these grants, although we have teamed up with some other towns to purchase some capital equipment through a CROG, through a grant with CROG last year. So. I don't want to be too long-winded about this, but I think it's a good deal for us. And just so everyone understands the existing agreement we have with the state, if there is a down tree over a trail, our guys get the call. If it's work we can do, we will go in and remove the tree and push it off to the side. If it's not and it's heavier, we had a storm that came through a couple of years ago, we might hire an outside contractor to perform that. But at that time, it was on the town's dime. If it's something smaller, I might be able to, excuse me, if we have graffiti that needs to be removed, you know, I might be able to do that with a volunteer trails manager or something like that. But this wouldn't change. If we put pen to paper on this, it's still going to be the same process. I'm still going to have to get it fixed. Our department's going to have to get it fixed. But now we can apply for monies if there are some more serious issues within the quarry. Happy to take any questions.
Just a quick question. And maybe Mona knows too. You mentioned something about the grants. Can any portion of the 75,000 or stipend that they would give us, could any of that be used towards matching a grant?
We could, I believe so. I'm not 100% sure on that, but when I did talk to our rep from Land Management, I did mention that and she seemed to think that that would fly.
Okay. Thanks.
I just want to confirm, has our town attorney looked at some of the, because there's a lot of terms and conditions and I just want to make sure that there's, we have no liability that we're not aware of because the state has the state interest, so can we confirm that?
Yeah, see, I referred it to him twice. First time he had, I think I, in your package, I think I emailed his response, very short. He had no issues with it. He just wanted to make sure the town was comfortable with those, with the liabilities that we have, that we have now. I mean, it's no different than any other park as far as insurance coverage and what have you that we do. And then I sent it to him again later because there was another, a $75,000 issue and he still had no additional comments. So, he looked at it twice.
I remember your email and Bill's email coming across. I don't remember specific questions that you had, but are you comfortable if you have specific questions that they've been answered by the attorney?
Yeah, I just wanted to have on the record that.
Gotcha. All right. Okay.
Craig, just to kind of look at, this looks like it's just an extension of an agreement that already existed with the opportunity to have a one-time $75,000 fund for additional to use for improvements on the trails within the park?
Well, I, you could look at it that way. I can tell you, if we don't sign the agreement, we're not going to get the money. But also, this will, I think, in my opinion, this actually strengthens our relationship with DEEP. This will allow us to go seek additional grant funding. We're going to need additional grant funding to perform if we want to do a connection to Goff Brook Lane. We're going to need additional grant money. The 75K is not going to cut it. So. I think the answer to your question is yes, but there's some, I guess, some further.
Yeah, I guess what I'm, let me ask it differently. If we don't sign this, are we going to lose, we have the potential to lose the easement rights to that property?
I can't answer that.
Because that's, I mean, I'm just reading this as an extension and the state's extending our easement. And as part of the process is a separate settlement that'll put potentially $75,000 of available funds. I'm just not seeing the, like, I know we have to approve it so it could be signed, but I guess I'm missing what the risk is of moving it forward. It just seems like an extension of an agreement with some funds available.
I don't, I don't think there's much risk at all.
It's an extension of the document. It's nothing, it's not an extension of the easement. It's not a difference in usage. It's just, again, just putting down in a revised document. They revised two sections, I think, the signage policies for the DEEP. Downwriting and finally filing it and it, now it's just like we said a couple of times, it's memorialized and we operate as we have been, correct?
Yeah.
As we have been, as you do now.
Yep.
There will be no change in the operation. Just this little tidbit of $75,000 is thrown in there. That's from a stipulated judgment.
I did have a question about that, Ray. There was reference to a stipulated judgment. In what action?
Was that subdivision, Craig? There was a subdivision, remember the Old Main subdivision?
There was a subdivision over on Old Main that they started work on. And there was, I believe that they started to, it had something to do with MDC and they were doing some digging in areas where they shouldn't have been, or excavating in certain areas that they didn't have permission to. And then it halted the project. And it also, I don't know the exact, so there were some, so it halted the entire project and then it was on hold. So, if you actually go down there, it's like a, it's a process road and, but there was supposed to be a trail behind the development that went from Goff Brook to behind the development, but they wanted to extend it from the development into the quarry, right at the bottom, like where the Blue Trail is. So.
So, basically, it was a DEEP, I look at it as a DEEP fee, a fine.
Fine, yeah.
It was like a fine. Because he operated without permits. He went off track. They didn't really know. They were way off and they started excavating and going onto not their own property. And so, there's an order issued by DEEP to halt and this was the result. You know, here's, you got to pay $75,000.
It was issued by DEEP against the developer. It created this, it led to this pot of money that DEEP administers.
Yeah.
And now that money's being made available to us for this purpose.
Yeah.
And I think the main liability concern that people are alluding to is, you know, if someone gets hurt, right? We either do the claim that the town didn't maintain the space properly or undertook a project that was done improperly, but we're already there anyway, right?
Anyway.
Our people are already doing work on a regular basis, so whatever liabilities that might be going forward are the same type that we're already.
Correct.
Potential hook for already.
Right.
Is there a time limit on this or is this forever?
So, from when this agreement gets executed, we would have five years to use the funding. And just so everyone knows, there is like, it's almost like an application process, like we do have to present a scope of work and then we would pay and then we would reimburse, the state would reimburse the town after the work's performed.
I was looking for a duration on this agreement. It's buried way deep in terms of conditions that either side can cancel it when they want. So.
There's no end date.
Term on it, but both sides, both the town and the state, have a right of cancellation, but it's buried pretty deep. You have to go pretty far into it to find it.
Now, you're taking this as the first agreement, though? Official agreement, Bill? I don't think we had one before, correct?
There was something that was original, put pen to paper. I think it was back in like 1991.
Yeah, there was an original heritage.
It says a deed. There's a, that we have here presented. A warranty deed.
That was to the state and then the owner, I forget his name, began with a D, but with that, he granted a conservation easement in perpetuity to the town.
So, I would think this is our first official agreement with the state for.
Yeah. But I don't know if, I can't find the original document, but I know Rich Roberts did read the original document and he said it basically follows the same. Same as the original. But I don't know if the original was actually ever executed. That's why now they're pushing to get it executed.
To get it executed.
I don't think anybody ever signed it way back in the 90s.
So, Ray, I noticed that one of the grand tours on this deed is the town of Glastonbury. So, does the town of Glastonbury own part of this land that is physically in Rocky Hill?
I did not notice that.
Because town of Glastonbury and the town of Rocky Hill are the two grand tours.
Yeah, we gave him a dollar, I think, right?
I don't know. Let me.
I saw it too.
It's in the warranty deed, the first sentence. Well, I know I don't get any help from them when there's an issue. I'll tell you that.
Or maybe, oh, maybe that's an individual who lives in Glastonbury. Okay.
Granted to the state.
Donald DeMar of the town of Glastonbury. Maybe he's a guy who lives in Glastonbury, but he owned part of the parcel near the town parcel. Maybe that's what it was.
Was that page?
It's the very beginning, the very beginning of that warranty deed. I want you to go to the signature page.
Just while you're looking over that, you don't see anything that we're not doing already, correct?
No.
We're already maintaining it and overseeing it. Thanks.
Wait, it doesn't require extra work?
No. It actually requires extra work on my part, but it's a biannual report that I have to provide DEEP and I, when I spoke to our rep today, it's not a, I'll be okay.
Is there a template?
I'll be okay. Yeah.
Any other questions? No? No? Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the cooperative management agreement for Quarry Park as presented in our packet.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. No one opposed? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
And you do need some five, five, five votes.
Oh, that's, yeah, I was just going to say, I just saw that in the charter, so, right. Your, Councilor Throw is right. You need five votes unless it's for the time of a meeting or something like that, but anything beyond that, you need five. That was it.
Oh, thank you. Okay. All right. So, let's move on. We're going to go to the mayor's report. I'm just going to say very quickly to mark your calendars, we have a lot happening in town, but first and foremost, happy DiValli to everyone who is celebrating. We will have a town celebration, which is hosted by our Commission on Inclusion and Innovation on Saturday, October 25th, from 10:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. here at the Community Center. That does require a registration at rockyhillct.myrec.com. And I want to thank the commission and all of the volunteers on its committee for putting this annual event together. It continues to grow and is always well-attended. Also, Make It On The Hill is Sunday, November 2nd, 10 a.m. to 1 p.m. And that will be handmade gifts for the holidays. September 11th wreath ceremony will be at 6:30 at fire station number one. Early voting started today, so you'll have the next 14 days to use the community center or else you can vote on Election Day at your regular polling stations. And finally, I want to thank Parks and Rec and all of the generous sponsors for the work that they did for this Fall Fest. I understand it was a huge success and the weather was incredible. So, congratulations and thank you to everyone. And then finally, I just want to say thank you to the council, all of the Board of Education members, all of the folks who are on our commissions and task force and committees and everything else that we've put together for the past two years, for your service, your volunteer work and your commitment to the town. And for all who are running again, I wish you much success. And for those who are not running again, I just want to say thank you on behalf of the entire town because we definitely appreciate your work. And that's that.
The town manager's report, the highway crew's been very busy. They've done curb repairs from winter damage. They've paved the old skate park for the Italian Fest to make that a success so it was easier to get around. They've removed some old trees on a number of roads in town. They've removed some old trees on a number of roads in town. They have replaced some new signs throughout the town, including the high school. They initiated some sweeping for paving, uh, prior to paving. And they paved eight driveway aprons along Allison Way. So highly, highly busy crew, um, doing great work. Uh, human services have been collaborating with the board of education to introduce the wait until eighth program. That's a program that encourages parents to delay giving their kids, um, cell phones until eighth grade. Um, it's a, it's a nationwide movement and if they get ten parents to sign on it and that kind of generates, hopefully generates interest and, you know, maybe, maybe it could happen here. You know, try to get the kids outside, maybe that would help. They have also been prepping for the Diwali ceremony. They'll be providing a, uh, community project called the Wall of Light and Blessings. And they also provide Diwali with a themed sensory room, which is number four, room number four down in the community center for the event. Town clerk is very busy working with the registrars of voters for early voting and for the elections in general. A little bit on community development on sidewalks, Washington Street construction started and they plan on being finished by November. The infamous fog sealing, um, process, they have, they have applied to thirteen roads. Silo, West Meadow, Garfield, Applewood. And the Applewood neighborhoods, they paved June Circle, Crystal Road. And Hayes Road has been milled and paved and then now they're striping, I'm told. Let's see, Park and Rec, Elm Street Pool was painted, the outdoor deck caulked and the acid feeder was replaced. The boiler replacement work will start at the end of October and should take three to four weeks to complete. And they are hosting, Parks and Rec are hosting an indoor craft and artisan fair November second at the community center. I don't know what times that would be, but stay tuned to our town social media. And finally, just a little tidbit, the senior center is now accepting renew active members. It's similar to, um, the Silver Sneakers program, but it's, um, offered by United Healthcare. People who are insured through United Healthcare have renew active. And there was a request that we, um, provide that particular program. So Gina did. Concludes my report.
And I forgot to add that, uh, congratulations to the, um, BOE on the Rocky Hill High School open house tonight. That was at six o'clock. I don't know if anyone got a chance to go to it. But the high school opened a new career center to get the kids workforce ready, starting their resumes and interview skills and all of that stuff. So that's a big deal. Okay, moving on to executive session.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session. Discussion concerning the performance and evaluation of the town manager in accordance with section one dash two hundred six A of the Connecticut general statutes with the town manager, director of human resources, legal compliance and risk management, and the town attorney.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve the executive summary concerning the town manager's performance review as discussed in the executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.